Weathersfield Young Democrat of the Year. And this honor was bestowed to her at an honor ceremony at The River Restaurant in Weathersfield. In attendance were Connecticut State Senator Richard Blumenthal, Weathersfield Board of Education Chair Bobby Granato, Senator John Fonfera, Mayor Amy Bello, Democratic Town Chair John Gallivan, Democratic State Representative Russ Morin, Democratic Lieutenant Governor Susan Beisowitz, Democratic Party Chairman Nancy Wyman, and the Attorney General of Connecticut William Tong. Emma is also President of the Young Democrats at Weathersfield High School and has been for the past two years. She is always the one that keeps members informed of meetings and volunteer opportunities and is also an outstanding motivator. Emma can always be counted on to get volunteers at a political event. Emma recently attended the prestigious Girls State where she honed her leadership skills and learned more about the government process. Emma has worked hard for our municipal candidates and has worked in several campaigns for Russ Morin, and most recently Emma worked for Paul Doyle's campaign for Attorney General. Emma has learned from all of these experiences and at a young age has gained valuable campaign experience. Her accomplishments extend beyond just this club. She's treasurer of the National Honor Society and treasurer of her graduating class of 2019. She's also found time to coordinate WHS blood drives, she's a member of the math team, the Arts National Honor Society, and the Black Student Union. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask that you join me in a round of applause for Emma Moore. Outstanding student.
Congratulations, Emma. How do you find time for everything? And I know your schoolwork is top priority.
It's a lot. I've figured it out over the last couple of years. You know, I go to work, I have classes. I just, I kind of know how to prioritize. I like to, you know, like, I do what I like the best first. Yeah. But, and you know, everything I do is because I love doing it, you know? I wouldn't be in a situation where I'm stuck doing something I hate. So I think that just makes everything a lot easier. Yeah, pretty much. That would be it.
That's great. I was talking to you recently about all the colleges you're visiting.
Yes.
Best of luck on all of them. How many was it again?
Well, I've probably visited like a little over fifteen, but I applied to eleven.
Congratulations and best of luck on all of that.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have questions for Emma? I'm just so proud of you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Emma. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
We do. We have one more little piece that we'd like to show. If I could have Mr. Thomas Moore, Principal of Weathersfield High School and proud father of Emma Moore, please come up to the podium. Mr. Moore is going to show us a video clip with regard to something that's going on at Weathersfield High School that again aligns with our strategic plan in providing career opportunities and those soft skills necessary for student success in the real world. So, Mr. Moore has a clip that he's going to show us.
Space, space. The space. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Each Friday morning at Weathersfield High School, a group of educators meets, administrators, counselors, special education. We also have representatives from DCF and probation. And we get together and we talk about one of the most important aspects of education, and that is attendance. Right? So, in our attendance meeting, we look at students who are struggling a little bit, some who need a little extra attention, and we also brought to light the idea of punctuality and tardiness, right? Because again, that is affecting some of the instruction for some of our students. Right? Two of the members of the team, or one is our Career Coordinator, Mr. Mark Danaher, and also Technology Education Teacher Sue Coco, had an idea, had a thought as to how maybe we could try to motivate, try to educate, try to encourage our students to be as timely as possible as we do, along with many other schools in the state of Connecticut throughout the nation, right? Have a little bit of difficulty with punctuality. All right? So, through the efforts of Mr. Danaher, who has been doing an outstanding job at our school, and Ms. Coco, right? We were able to put together a little video that we showed through the advisory program, and I'd like you to see it this evening. So, here we go.
Welcome to this career advisory lesson. I'm Mr. Danaher, the Career Counselor at Weathersfield High School. In this lesson, we are looking at the importance of punctuality. We wanted to find out if there was a magic ingredient to instill good habits with teens. So we challenged ourselves to find professionals who could share their insights. We talked to a college coach, a professor, a local employer, and even a Weathersfield High alum.
Pull your weight. We're competing in a very tough world, and we have to do things right, and we have to be faster than the rest of the people that we're competing with.
You've got to prepare kids to be ready for a life after college, and I think sports does that to kids.
In high school, it's like, the mob's getting you up, now you've got to do it. It's way more of a responsibility in college.
When you're hired somewhere, you're invited to be part of a team, and people are counting on you to do your very best.
I try to teach my students here at the college that this is the real world. They like to think of when they leave here, they're going to the real world. This is my real world, and this may be their practice or rehearsal, if you will, for their entrance into the employable world.
Obviously, usually the first time I let it go, because you know, everybody makes mistakes in life. You don't want to punish kids for off the bat. But if it's, it depends when it is in the season also. But the first time I let it go, next time, you know, either you're going to do some conditioning or I send you home. You've got to prepare kids to be ready for a life after college, and I think sports does that to kids.
As a captain, I feel like if you're coming late to practice, you're already not focused. So, it's either you've got to do a punishment or you've just got to get sent home, you know? Like, everybody here is supposed to buy into what we want going on over here to be successful. So, if you're late, you're not focused at that point. So, you've just got to figure out what to do, basically.
Being late to a college practice, I think the fair consequence is, you know, you should not be able to play the next game because, you know, as, this is a job, you know? It's a legit thing, so you've got to be able to show up on time, and even earlier than on time, because it's very, it shows we're committed to the team, it shows we want to be here.
Usually your decisions, your actions affects others, and sometimes when you're late for a meeting, you're affecting other people's actions and their days. So, it's important to make sure that it's not consistent, I think, more than anything. But time is important, you know, in the world of athletics, you know, time for practice and time for games, because in the real world, you could lose your job.
If someone's repeatedly late, then in my mind, they really send you a message that they don't value their position, they don't value being part of your team, and there's probably somebody else who would value being a member of your team. So you're better off having that person move on to somewhere else and use that position to hire somebody new.
Everyone's going to be late, once, or twice, or three times. I get personally pretty stressed out when I'm late. So I've had occasions where I have tight timeframes to airports. My biggest stress factor is I miss a plane flight, and then all of a sudden, people are scheduled to meet me somewhere, and I've missed the flight. I can miss a whole day of meetings or training. A lot of my trips are international, so a day can get lost by being late.
Are you more important than somebody else's time?
I played baseball growing up, and every time, my dad and I were the first ones to the field to really make sure we were warmed up and ready, you feel prepared. There's times on the job now where I can feel that. I get to presentations sometimes, I'm ready, I'm confident, I feel like I know what I'm doing, everything's going to be okay. There's been some times where I haven't been there 15 minutes early, say I'm there five minutes early, and I feel rushed, I don't feel ready, and everything's looking at you, and it gets a little more challenging. So, from a young age, my parents just always insisted on being on time, being early, being prepared, and being ready.
The reality is that everyone's time is important, so no matter what level, no matter what title you have, so I think you should respect it.
So when it comes to things like being on time, that's a great way of showing your level of dedication. You're the kind of person that shows up at the last minute or late consistently. What you're communicating is you don't much care. And if that's the case, people won't want you on their team, they won't want to work with you, and they're not going to give you challenging assignments because they frankly aren't going to trust you.
They do need to know that they fit into a bigger piece of the world, that they don't stand alone anymore, okay? That what they do has consequences, good, bad, and indifferent on others, and that no matter what we do as people, we're part of the team.
So that video was a part of an advisory lesson. We have a weekly advisory at Weathersfield High School, and I was very pleased that Mr. Emma, Emmett invited us to show this this evening because I think with the strategic plan, it really informs some of the aspects that you as a board are looking at through the strategic plan and that we are implementing at Weathersfield High School.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore? John?
The kids built this too? They did the video and the music and the whatnot?
Through the technology club and through the classes with Ms. Coco, right? They were a part of this, right? But primarily, for the most part, it was Mr. Danaher and Ms. Coco.
Awesome. Very nice job.
Any other questions? We had a wonderful Career Advisory Board meeting last night, and we did see this, and Mark is doing it, Mark Danaher is doing such a nice job presenting the soft skills that our students so need as they go out into their careers. And we talked about careers last night too, and the vision that we're hoping children have of what their future is like and goals to attain. And they're just a great, great group of people. These things are fabulous for our students. Thank you.
I would agree. I think they're very important. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay. Thanks again. And next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our regular Board of Ed meeting way back on January 22nd, 2019. Anyone see any corrections? Okay. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, those minutes are approved. Also on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for a special Board of Ed meeting on January 14th, 2019. Anyone see any corrections? Okay. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. She's watching us. Ellen's watching, so.
Do it right.
That's right. Those minutes are approved. And finally, on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for a special Board of Ed meeting on February, oh, the other one was January 14th. This is February 14th, 2019. Are there any corrections? May I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Those minutes are approved. Okay, at this moment, anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Mr. Emmett, you have communication to share?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening again, everyone. We had our first snow day of the school year, much to the delight of our students and the disdain of our parents. This happened on February 12th. At this point in time, we're now looking at the last day of school occurring on Friday, June 14th. I have already been asked by multiple teachers across the district, please, Mr. Emmett, no more snow days. We'd like to finish on a Friday. So, we'll do the best we can, but obviously, student and staff safety come first and foremost. I want to talk with you a little bit this evening about the budget. With the cancellation of the last board meeting due to the weather, the superintendent's proposed budget was presented at the special board meeting that Mrs. Granato just mentioned on February 14th. With the shared services model implemented, we're looking at our operating budget actually decreasing by .83 percent. This is the result of custodial maintenance salaries, benefits, maintenance and repair budget lines shifting over to the town, and the crossing guard budget shifting over to the Board of Education. We have followed the presentation with the budget workshop held on February 20th. I know we do have another workshop planned for tomorrow, although we are looking at this point in time in postponing that. One of the things that we talked about at the budget workshop last week was utilities. Right now, utilities are still carried in the Board of Ed budget, and there was some talk about shifting utilities over from the board to the town. If that takes place, that would be an additional $1.3 million leaving our operating budget, and we would see our decrease in the operating budget for next year go to a minus 3.1 percent. So, we'll have more communication out. We'll need to pull the board for an upcoming budget workshop. Again, we understand that the town will be meeting next Wednesday to talk about their budget, so we'll want to make sure that we have that latest up-to-date information.
That's a three.
With regard to Phase Two, I had this queued up for the meeting on the 12th. The work on Phase Two is ongoing. The group met on February 11th for an update. We had a wetlands inspection take place over at High Crest as part of the due diligence phase, and an inspection of the area around the Hammer and Stanish Park property. Malone and McBroom will use the data to formulate a variety of scenarios for elementary buildings. We're looking at five different scenarios coming forward. We expect those scenarios to come forward within the next couple of months. High Crest portable, we are working on the design now. I have been in contact with the state, thank you very much. It took a long time to get a response. Happy to know that we've gotten that. The state will not support reimbursement for portables that are in for an indefinite period of time. So, what we may end up doing here is we may be able to facilitate this through our Phase Two as well as our long-range plan if we can take High Crest offline within a certain number of years. The state reports that you, generally speaking, portables are okay with them for a two-to-three year period. We know the portables at High Crest as well as at Charles Wright have been there way, way longer than two to three years. And we also know that our long-range plan talks about 10 years. So, we'll have to see if we can make that work. Silas Dean Roof, roof over the auditorium continues to spring leaks. I was over there late last week, and we had buckets and pails everywhere. Tremco, the roofing contractor, had been out to assess. They confirmed that the roof section needs replacement. I'll be touching base with Ms. Katz on the status of this project as well as the latest projected cost. This may well be a project that we need to complete during school time. That's not one of my favorite things to do. If that needs to be done, we will certainly plan that process out with a lot of forethought and make sure that we ensure a minimum of disruptions to the learning process. Also at Silas Dean Middle School, pleased to report that Rosalyn Bannon has started in her role as Silas Dean Principal. First day was yesterday. Interim Principal Donna Shulkey is overlapping this week to assist Rosalyn with the transition. So, I had the opportunity to meet with her yesterday. Very excited to be here in Weathersfield. Instructional Supervisor for Technology Sarah Harris has joined the district as of February 20th. This position replaces the director position held by our beloved friend Keith Raffanello. Sarah's role will be focused upon the direct support of classroom teachers around the integration of technology. You know, you as a board have supported the rollout of one-to-one. We need to make sure that we're supporting our teachers in the classroom and making sure that they have the skills necessary to implement those machines in the classrooms. Weathersfield High School will welcome Tara Yusko as Assistant Principal beginning next Monday. Tara will join us from the Seymour Public Schools. She is currently serving as an acting principal while her principal at the middle school is out for jury duty. She has already begun her transition, including interview with Blue Eagle News. And this is also a perfect time to thank Mr. Paul Cavallari, who served as our interim Assistant Principal at the high school this school year. Mr. Cavallari was an excellent complement to the administrative team, and his support of the students in the district are greatly appreciated. On February 15th, I had the opportunity to attend a team event at the Connecticut Science Center through my connection with Goodwin College. This was an outstanding opportunity to do some great networking. I had the opportunity to meet with folks from the realm of higher education, including President of a couple of our community colleges. I also had the opportunity to speak with my colleague Craig Cook from Windsor. They already have a manufacturing program in place at Windsor High School, so we'll be scheduling some time to go up and take a look and see what they're doing as we embark upon our plans for the future. And speaking of Goodwin College, they'll be visiting our manufacturing space at the high school to further our discussion on partnering, to offer students access to a blended high school-college manufacturing program. That'll be happening on Friday. The guidance department at the high school has identified approximately 30 interested students, and our expectation is to continue to work through the logistics to get to a point where we can make this plan a reality. And then finally, best of luck to our winter sports teams. They are now entering tournament season. Hard to believe that it's gone so fast, but we've got a girls' basketball game occurring this evening over at the high school. We've got wrestlers going to states, hockey's in the tournament, boys' basketball's in the tournament. We have swimmers headed to states. It's indoor track, we had some excellent results there as well, so it's been a great winter season. And with that, it's communications.
Also, just another team, the dance team did a fabulous job too this year.
Champions this year? Yes.
Yep. Any questions for Michael? Diane?
At the Goodwin College, are we going to get a formalized plan presented to the board?
Yes, as I had mentioned previously when we had talked about this, my expectation would be we would go through student programs and services so you can see the connection. One of the things in our prior meeting, Goodwin provides kind of a roadmap for the courses that are needed. So, the guidance staff took that roadmap and then cross-referenced with student schedules and student backgrounds to identify kids that would meet the expectations of this program. It is a rigorous program, and the expectation would be that we'd be looking at both dual high school and college credit for this.
And who will pay for the college credit?
That's one of the logistical pieces that we're working out at this point in time. Right now, one of the nice things is we have the space and Goodwin has the staff. We don't have the funding and the budget for extra staff, and they've got the staff. So we're looking at the potential of actually having their staff come in and work in our high school with our group.
I would like to request that, if it goes to student programs and services, that it also be brought before the full board. I get very nervous with these for-profit colleges.
Well, if I may comment on that, I know there's, I know a lot of what Goodwin does. It's all good. Whether they're for profit or not doesn't mean anything. I think we should, Mark Scheinberg, I think is a visionary.
Thank you.
Mark Scheinberg, who's the President of Goodwin College and Goodwin College in general, I think are, he is a visionary in higher education, actually getting kids and people in careers where they come out and they can earn a living, a good living. They teach things that are applicable in the new economy that we have, and any exposure we have to them or any other school that takes this approach, I think is positive. We certainly reserve the right to evaluate to see if anything is amiss, but I can, and I understand Diane's, I was going to say that, don't worry, Diane's objection and worry about it, but I don't see the profit motive as being counterproductive here. I think they've demonstrated, this college has demonstrated, not just with our high school, but I think they're doing with other high schools in the area, this kind of partnership.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We do not have any action items this evening, so we'll move on. We do have our first read of the proposed policy 405, which is on criminal history recorded information. Does anyone have any questions on this policy? All right, because we'll be voting on it at our next board meeting. John does.
This is a brand-new policy?
This is a state requirement, Mr. Morris, and this comes from an audit that was done by the State Homeland Security around our background checks, how we maintain information related to background checks and fingerprints. So, given the fact that this is a state requirement, I asked the question of shipment to Goodwin, why didn't we see it in the policies? And they said they do not include it in their policies because of the fact it is a state requirement. So, the policy as you see it is exactly as it comes from the state of Connecticut. I provided you with a copy of the audit some weeks back. This was supposed to go on the February 12th board meeting, and we also discussed this last night in policy and planning. So this is one of the expectations of the audit that we are to adhere to. We have 45 days with which to answer to the audit. One of the things that had to be done is we had to do training, so yours truly got to do the module training and get certified and let the State Homeland Security Department know that, yes, we are in fact trained. We have a couple of other staff members in the HR department that will also be trained for this. So, this is a, pretty much, a standard policy as it is from the state.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll be voting on that at our next board meeting. Also tonight, we have a presentation of the Strategic Plan's quarterly report. Michael?
Yep.
Welcome to the next quarterly update of the strategic plan. Our focus over the past quarter has largely been the same. You've heard a lot of the theme this evening already, and that is getting our students out into the community, getting our students involved in opportunities to support lifelong learning, 21st century skills, and career development. In addition to that, we've also continued to focus on our partnerships with community groups as well as businesses, and obviously on the HR side and the business side, we focused in on maintaining opportunities to try and bring in funding from additional outside sources as well as looking for efficiencies. So, again, just to remind you, the plan management, this comes directly from our strategic plan, and this is the process by which we assess how our plan is going. Our Governance Committee consisting of John Cassio and Bobby Granato, we do meet, we do discuss the process of how things are going. We are looking to obviously ongoing, on an ongoing basis prioritize our strategies and our actions relative to budget and impact. So again, student achievement. This should ring true in everyone's ears, continuously restructuring curriculum and instruction to provide students with a continuum of increasingly challenging opportunities to demonstrate and understand the desired behavior such as academic success, social, emotional intelligence, collaborative problem-solving, civic awareness, and contributions and critical thinking. So again, these were the actions that we have been focusing on over the course of this year. Actions 1, 7, 7.1, 8, and 8.1. So let's talk a little bit about where we've been from the earlier quarterly report to now. We had mentioned that the connection to the Travelers Insurance Company for student programs had begun. I'm very pleased to report, and you know already that the actuarial group came and did a presentation. We have had an additional shadow day up at Travelers where we had an additional 20 students attend. They have an actuarial summer camp that's being planned now that our students will have access to, and the folks from the Travelers are also working with Weathersfield High staff to develop an INVEST program, and it's currently in the planning stages. That INVEST program will provide programming for students in the areas of investment and finance. We have multiple area schools that are already involved with this INVEST program, and it's been very well received in other districts in the greater Hartford area. As I mentioned earlier, our collaboration, that potential collaboration with Goodwin College around manufacturing is more than a potential. This is certainly in progress at this point with Goodwin scheduled to visit on Friday. And as I mentioned earlier, we have 30 interested students at this point in time. Fundraising efforts to support learning opportunities. We've done one fundraising effort already at Puerto Vallarta, and you're asking, well, what does the fundraising go for? Well, it goes for trips. It goes for the cost of transportation to get our kids out of Weathersfield High School and out in to the community. So, Mr. Danaher reported last night that he still has some funding left for approximately two more trips, but we are talking about other fundraising opportunities to make sure that we get our kids out into the community. The Career Advisory Board is meeting monthly. As Mrs. Granato mentioned, this met last night, and actually, we have a new connection to a healthcare opportunity for 20 students. The opportunity for our students to go and engage in robotics, and looking at the robotic surgery so they have access to head into the room. And again, this is all organic, it's all homegrown, and it's coming from the connections that we've made with the Career Advisory Board. We're certainly very, very We're certainly very, very proud and happy about that. I want to mention again, I've mentioned this earlier in the year, but we've got an appellate court session to be held at Weathersfield High School on April 23rd. I believe, Mr. Morris, are you going to be involved in that?
Yes, it's April 16th.
It is April 16th, all right. So, we have a planning meeting set up for May 5th, so, or, excuse me, March 5th.
Next week.
Next week. So, we'll make sure that we get a press release out after we solidify all the logistics. This will be open to the public. It will obviously be during the course of the school day, so we have a lot of logistics to go through on this, but that's coming up as well. Our expectation is we have students in seeing court in real time, and I can think of no other public schools in the area that have done something like this. So, I think it's a great opportunity.
Can you give us those dates again, Mike?
Yeah, let me check on that to make sure for that, just to make sure.
All right.
We've got a planning, and I'll make sure I get it into the Friday update. Yeah, we've got our planning meetings slated for March 5th, so. And then, last but not least, in terms of progress being made, last night we talked a little bit about this. We are developing a career fair at Weathersfield High School. We're in the planning stages of that now. We're looking at May of 2019. Is it May 23rd of 2019?
Yeah.
It may well be. So, that might be the connection there, the 23rd piece. So, we'll have a lot more for you on that as it gets closer, but we're looking at bringing in area businesses. I would say the Weathersfield Public Schools as an employer would also be there representing and talking with our students about career opportunities that we have for them for the future. Be remiss if I didn't talk about the PD offerings. You know our strategic plan talks heavily about professional development and coaching. We had a lengthy schedule, which you had in your Friday update, about offerings that we had across the district, from social, emotional learning, implementing the curriculum that our teachers have written over the course of the summer. We did another session of ABA training, which supports our ABA programs at Webb. Instructional behavioral strategies to grow independent students, that took place, we had a consultant in to focus on that. Google platform technology to support student learning. We had our TEL assessment for English language learners. Art teachers, I have to say, I saw the art teachers. The art teachers were on the road. I went to the Connecticut Science Center, and that's where the art teachers were. They were connecting STEAM opportunities to art, so science, technology, engineering, and math, and how to integrate that with art. Physical education teachers actually partnered with the town's bike and pedestrian committee. I actually serve on that committee and met with that group just last week and talked about the potential of utilizing a fourth grade bike curriculum that the gym teachers, through our leader-leader model, are interested in bringing in and teaching to our kids. So, we're talking about how we can go about getting helmets, how we can go about actually getting bikes and doing a biking, like a bike rodeo for our fourth graders. I like that because it's a homegrown event, and again, shout out to Mary Gathers from Webb who has spearheaded this. And then also with professional development, we sent our counselors out to community colleges to talk about what opportunities our kids have at community colleges, what they are looking for, and again, tips and ideas. Terms of goal two, our civic and family engagement, I mentioned this earlier, about making the walls of the schools more permeable and providing opportunities for students to learn outside and community members to learn inside. And here's action four. One of the things, as you know, at our January 22nd board meeting, we had United Way come in and do a presentation on the ALIS report. As was stated at that meeting, thirty-four percent of our Weathersfield families currently meet ALIS requirements. That's asset limited. They are employed, but they struggle to make ends meet. We met last week with John Prescott from the United Way, and we're talking about taking part in the ALIS challenge, which has with it funding to the tune of $20,000, which can support our families. We have a kickoff event on March 20th, so if there are any members of the board who are interested in participating in that, I already have somebody who's expressed an interest from town council. We're looking for multiple people to serve on this advisory committee and talk about how we can best fund programming for our families. Obviously, you know shared services. The shift for custodial maintenance has been completed as of January of 2019. That is also reflected in our proposed budget. Again, I continue to participate in the quarterly Chamber of Commerce meetings. These are great meetings to be able to talk about what's going on in the district and to make connection with area businesses. We participated in the state-of-the-town breakfast. We discussed the strategic plan there, both myself as well as Mrs. Granato. Meeting with elected officials at the CREG legislative breakfast. I did attend on behalf of the district and had a nice opportunity to talk with Representative Wood as well as Senator Lesser. Very pleased to have the opportunity to talk with them and talk a little bit about what we have going on in the district. And then also, in my role of being more of an external superintendent, I participated in a CAP superintendent's meeting with House Minority Leader Themis Klerdis. We talked about educational policy, we talked about bills and the impact upon school districts. Very interesting, got to meet superintendents from across the state, superintendents from regional districts, and folks that I don't typically see in the Hartford area. So, it was another certain, certain positive. And then last but not least, management, operations, and finance. I mentioned earlier, we are still focusing on our phase-two work. We are continually evaluating our ongoing expenses. As Matt talked about this evening at the finance committee meeting before, we are in good shape financially this year with about $48,000 to the black, so we're happy about that. And again, you see actions one, two. And our progress, phase two is currently in progress. As I mentioned earlier, it's mapping out five options for the district's elementary schools. Once that plan is finished, we will get that out to the public. We'll talk about which plans work best and what is the best avenue to move forward for our district. We had favorable audit findings for financials, as reported by Bloom Shapiro. We have submitted a school safety security grant to the state, and again, kudos to Matt Kazaka as well as Hal even for making that happen. Again, collaborating with United Way through the ALIS challenge for grant funds to support affected families. And then, last but not least, this one I added, I just got notification from the state today that Weathersfield is eligible for the competitive school readiness grant program through the CSDE, so we'll be taking a look at that and seeing if the RFP is broad enough to support what we need here in Weathersfield, and we may be able to get some additional funding there. In terms of next steps, where we're headed, again, the continued connection to school-based activities is evidenced in weekly school updates. You get those updates from each school. They directly align with the strategic plan. They talk about what actions and strategies are being addressed. Again, we certainly need to recognize potential budget implication and impact upon timelines. That's just a reality. And again, I think the important thing to continue broadening external connections for student opportunity and funding sources. And again, the next update will be coming up in May of 2019.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Emmett?
Mike, what's the cost of phase two? Do you remember basically offhand?
Forty-five.
Excuse me? I don't, I don't.
I want to say, off the top of my head, it was, I know, because we, so let me get that to you in the Friday update. Happy to do so.
That's no fun.
Okay, and just a reminder how this all came about. John Cassio and myself in a committee with the administration, and then in our retreat, we came up with our strategic plan, which is a focus for the entire system for a duration of time, not just for one year. And we're setting up quarterly reports so that we know exactly where we're moving along and also obstacles that come our way. This is being implemented by the administration and staff, and at the end of the year, we will have a cumulative assessment of exactly what's been going on, so very excited about this.
And the other thing, Bobby, is we're going to find out things that do not work.
Right.
In the district. So, we won't repeat the problem over and over and over. We'll kind of like move on in a way or find a different direction or different avenue to go with.
Okay. And I like, and I appreciate all the work, Mike, and you did, Bobby, on this, and John, because we used to shelf these things, remember, John? We'd write them, and they'd sit on the shelf. So, now that I get an update, I'm really feeling much better about knowing what's going on, so I appreciate the work John, Bobby, and, I mean, Mike, John, and Bobby did.
Right.
Thank you.
We purposely made it a skinny plan, right, John?
Skinny.
So that people would look at it and we would use it, and.
Yeah, and it's usable.
I know, I can speak for the whole board when I say our Friday updates are fabulous.
Yeah, they are.
And so often, they refer to the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm. And it's also good for everyone to be able to have and go back and look to see what's happening in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Strategic plan for.
Next on our agenda are meetings held, and our finance chair, Kevin owns most of this, so he's going to start out with our finance and information management.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the best would be basically combined finance from January 22nd and from earlier today on the 26th, as that gives you the most recent updates that we have for the current year-to-date as well as the next year's planning. As Mr. Emmett mentioned before, year-to-date, we're about $50,000 under budget favorably. Really of note is that our business office, Mr. Kazaka was doing some more sleuthing, has found out kind of what, we think we found out what our electricity problem is, especially within the high school. Long story short, that the high school separated from the rest of the buildings in town on a different energy supplier, and that was on a variable rate that kicked in about six or seven months ago. So, we're kind of tracking down those contracts and who, what, where, and when, who entered them when, and basically how. So, thank you again for finding, for finding that, finally, I appreciate it. And then, also, as Mr. Emmett had mentioned previously regarding the nineteen-twenty budget that was presented to us about a week or two ago, it is a point eight-three percent decrease. This is due to the shift to the town and shift from the town, that is, both custodial maintenance going to the town and the crossing guards coming in. Your percentage increase from our previous budget is about three point nine-eight percent. Of that, it's about point nine is discretionary, so over three percent is actually our contractual obligations that we must have. And beyond that, it was also discussed at our finance and information management meeting earlier tonight was there could be some further responsibilities taken from the town. That will be determined hopefully within the next week or so. So, once we get that information, the board will get, would like to come together again for another workshop to kind of discuss our next steps.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Kevin? John?
Kevin, just out of curiosity, what does it look like our, if the town does not take our utilities, where's the projection for us as a board? And if they do, I know there were some numbers minus three point one percent.
If they do take the utilities?
Do not.
Or they do not?
You said do not, John?
If they do take the utilities.
It would be about three point one percent decrease.
Okay. And then if they, if they don't.
If it stays at that score, it's point eight-three percent decrease.
Okay.
Another meeting held was the Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative known as WEC, and I went to that on February 11th. WEC is a wonderful collaborative, and the mission is that all our Weathersfield children birthed to eight are healthy, developmentally successful learners and connected to the community. PEP 2019 is up and running thanks to funding from the Board of Ed and the town. There are ten people who have signed up, and their number-one goal is to be more connected with the Weathersfield community for themselves and their children. An organization that is proving to be very beneficial for us as they network after they graduate. The Family Learning Program is successfully running as a preschool program. We are noticing there's a problem with transportation for some families, and we were even brainstorming ideas of answers such as Uber gift cards for families. We stated that in January, the WEC website had its highest number of visitors, a great tool for young families. We also reported that the data on the grade-three reading scores and applying for school readiness grants. Liz Frazier from the Connecticut Association for Human Services spoke to, on the Kids' Count data, a source of info for our school system, and anyone who loves numbers would love all this. She also spoke to the Two Gen Work to Get Families Assistance, focusing not just the child to be successful in our schools and community, but to work with the child and the family. I thought that was an interesting refocus. Okay, we had our special Board of Ed meeting, and I'm going to ask Kevin to speak to that again because it was on our budget.
Sure. Similar to what we were speaking about before, this was an opportunity for the administration, specifically Mr. Kazaka, to present the budget to us. We were able to answer some questions and get some clarifications specifically on the amount that's coming, being shifted from the board to the town.
Mike, thank you.
We were so dedicated. We gave a Valentine's Day to do this.
Yes, that's right. We were, we were all together that night. All right, the CREG Council, Ginger, can you speak to it?
Yes. In January, the CREG Council approved a resolution which they had been talking about for a few months, asking the legislature to resolve the recent funding shortfalls for the magnet school system. Magnet schools are the primary method for implementing the Chef versus O'Neill settlement agreement. At the February meeting, discussion centered around House Bill 7109, an Act Concerning Inter-District Magnet School Program Funding, which grew out of that resolution. That Act has already had at least one public hearing and is working through the system. There's really no telling whether it'll get passed, just like everything else in front of the state right now. But the Act provides a short-term solution to the ongoing funding challenges by proposing a five percent increase in magnet school funding from the state to the magnet schools, which would help us a lot because in our budget, both the one that Matt Kazaka prepared, which had an estimate and which he told us tonight, his estimate was actually a little low because they did finally get the final number. The towns are having to absorb a lot more because the state hasn't been stepping up to its commitments. So, we're hoping that that House bill will pass and that the individual school districts such as ours will get a bit of a break on the magnet school tuition.
Any questions for Ginger on this? This is going to be a big ticket item if it doesn't pass. Hmm. Okay. All right, so Kevin, again, we did have a budget workshop on our budget.
Yes, thank you. That was our first budget workshop where not only members of the board, but members of the town council were all invited. We had some members attend, and it was another opportunity for us to ask Mr. Kazaka and Mr. Emmett some pointed questions about why certain things were moving around and also trends that we see that we could plan for in the future out years.
Okay. Any other questions there? Okay, policy and planning. Chris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, we talked a little bit, and the superintendent explained the security protocol that was given to us by the state of Connecticut. The other bit of action we did was we discussed once again our cell phone policy, relate the existing policies that were adopted by this body via the shipment of Goodwin model, which mostly concerns the proper use of these devices in terms of proper usage for education, protecting the cyber integrity of the school system and all that. So, with the assistance of the high, Mr. Moore, we came up with some, we think are pretty rational fare guidelines and consequences for misuse of a cell phone or a personal technology device. That's our new term of a personal technology device, which can include these little phones on your little Dick Tracy wristwatches and all the other accoutrements of two-way communication. So, we have, we put together a series of increasing penalties for misuse. First-time possession is a warning, notify parent. Second time, notify principal. The third instance, we actually take the phone and wait to have it retrieved by the parent in question. And then we go into more punitive steps after that if the person still continues to have used that privilege, including a thirty-day suspension, and then after that, the suspension of use for the. Then after that, the suspension of use for the balance of the school year. We do believe, or a number of the members believe, this will enhance the quality of the atmosphere in each classroom, help teachers as well manage the classroom, and I think respect people's time. Very important for the children and the students to understand that, you know, as we said in that first thing about showing up on time or showing up early, it's also important to respect people's time in the classroom, the instructors as well. And we know this will also apply to staff as well, which is important. So we're moving forward with that. There's still plenty of time for people to comment and engage. I think I mentioned to some of you, I've met with two PTOs, elementary school PTOs, and they were pretty supportive in general, but we need to communicate this. I think it's a reasonable step and very doable based on what we've heard from Mr. Moore. And you'll see it in its first form the next time around in print. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Chris. It was interesting, Chris, last night at the Career Advisory Board, they had mentioned that in the business world, they want the phones away. So this is a great way to teach our students how to prepare themselves for their careers.
Yeah, I don't make any, I'm one of, it happened to me, we joked about the other day, I was in a work setting, and the phone went off, and my jingle, which is...
Whose was it?
My jingle, which is the theme from The Man from Uncle. Now I'm really dating myself here, but, and I almost, you know, had to dive out of the building in shame. So, I mean, we're all not immune to it, but I think the earlier that we can, you know, pose on it and the example we set is, as the staff has set and we set, is important. So that kind of bring the level of noise down, so to speak, and distraction, so.
Any questions for Chris about this policy, this soon-to-come? Okay. Thank you. All right. We do have one more. You have one more, Kev? Do you want to speak to it?
Well, we spoke to it earlier.
About ditto?
Yeah, the year-to-date of this year.
All right. We do have meetings scheduled. We have a special meeting of the Board of Ed, which I will communicate to you. That's another budget workshop. So it is scheduled for tomorrow, but perhaps we will put it off for a week, waiting for more information from the town budget. And there's another WEC meeting, which is on March 11th. It's going to be in the town chambers. For the life of me, it's not going to come to me, but it's, somebody is coming to speak, and it's on behalf of early childhood.
Two-gen program.
The two-gen program, thank you. All right, is there any unfinished business? All right. We have public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up to the podium and state your name and address. And may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Are there any board comments? Anyone, John?
Thank you, Bobby. I just want to say the video that was shown today by the high school, they did a great job. And I just think that that needs to be out there.
Yeah, we're excited about this.
And, you know, we get an opportunity to ask, is it going to be put in the guidance office? Is it going to be, you know, brought together in schools, online?
And we're talking about that last night. What way can we get it out there so that, but it is going to be in the advisory classes, so that way it does reach everybody.
That was great. And the, just to go along with the strategic plan update, the other motivation behind this is that we have a difficult time telling our story as a school district. And this is what keeps us on track to tell the good things, as well as to observe things that can be changed into a positive way. So I think that really is important for all of us to realize, whether it's this board or the future boards, that they have to continue down a good track and maintain that kind of balance. The other thing to just piggyback on the superintendent's comments regarding the next steps for Phase Two, and he, you know, kindly went over the different, five different scenarios of the boundaries within our district, within the schools. And when we're looking at the boundaries, we're not only looking for the educational space for the student, but we're also looking for the geographical definitions of the building as well as traffic flow of the building. Very, you know, it's, it's an in-depth situation that we're looking at. So it's just not space, it's the boundaries of the space that we can handle in the area of where a school is going to go and what we have for existing schools. And as you can see, from the elementary up to the high school, this traffic is an issue. So that certainly is, we're trying to be ahead of the game.
Good point, John.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent point.
In that particular area. The other thing, we're looking at our sites and are the, is there any deed restrictions? You know, I think that's imperative that we find out before we go off, what we really have to do the homework before, before we get too involved down the road. So we really have to do some deed research on the areas that we're looking at. And also, the cost for these restrictions that we'll impose on the Board of Ed. So I think that, you know, we're moving forward. We're in Phase Two. It's a lot of work. There's an amazing, amazing amount of detail that come before us that we just look at and go, really? Are you serious? And I hope that not only the board, but the community will embrace the efforts that we're doing right now to make what we need to do for Weathersfield.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John on that? The facility is, the committee is moving along with this. And you're right, John, there's a lot of work, a lot of data.
Can I share something?
Elaine?
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Mike Emmett and Matt Kazaka for the way the budget has been presented. We've had years where we've had to have four or five budget meetings, and the clarity of which it's presented by Matt and Mike is much easier for me to comprehend than others, I think. So we don't have sizes of phone books going home with us to peruse through. It's been very, very easy to understand, and I appreciate the hard work they did on that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I have quite a few comments because we haven't been together very much, and there's a lot of meetings that go on that aren't really committee meetings from the board. So a few remarks. The Hunger Action Team met on Friday, February 8th, to continue their incredible efforts to work with the Weathersfield community to reduce hunger, and I think just as importantly, to make the community aware of the needs of people in town. The Weathersfield Women for Progress are the dazzling dozen for this month during the food drive. Salsi Middle School is working on March Madness food drive, so good work and good luck to Grade VII and VIII, because the winners get to watch NCAA basketball. The Weathersfield High School Literary and Art Magazine, for the first semester, I believe it is, recently came out. It's called Pieces, where artists and writers unite. It's a high school publication made possible by a grant from the Keene Foundation. So if you can get your hands on it, it is so beautifully done. The artwork is incredible, and the writing is so deep.
Where did you get it from?
At the high school, I believe.
Did you get it at the high school?
At the high school.
Okay, yes.
And speaking of the Keene Foundation, I went to Keenan Kids, which is part of the Keene Foundation. They continue to provide the after-school program for our students. The programs continue to be incredibly popular and successful in both the elementary schools and the middle school. The foundation has two upcoming events that I hope everyone will support. On May 20th, the Unico Keene Foundation Golf Outing at the Weathersfield Country Club, and the 5K Race on Sunday, June 2nd. The library was represented at Keenan Kids with Brooke Berry, the director of the library, and she also does teen programs. Please see their brochure for info on all this. They offer a drawing program, emoji cookies. They did a Valentine votive and a pizza day. There's about 50 to 70 kids at the library on after-school programs on a program day. I guess Michael Emmett was there to check out their after-school activities. I recently received a most interesting report about the Weathersfield High School team in the Connecticut Ethics Bowl Championships, led by John Sands and with assistance from Karen Baldwin. The team did remarkably well, putting on a great display of intellect and logic. I'm hoping that next year, the students and teachers will continue this very challenging competition. To continue, we had a security team meeting with Michael Emmett, Chief Satrian, Hal Even, Chris Healy, and myself to discuss the security at all our schools. We discussed police presence at our buildings, a more diligent focus on not opening secure doors for others, and the security of our buildings during after-school activities. We will continue to meet monthly to discuss security and to work on any issues that may come up. The Board of Ed has made security in our schools our number-one priority. Had the opportunity to read at the Family Center last week. The pre-K students and their parents were a delightful group to work with. I read to the little ones and then talked with their parents afterwards. The families are from Eastern Europe, Syria, Japan, and Peru. The excitement of being part of the community is very evident. The parents talked about their fears of their children going off to school. Doesn't, it sounds very familiar. And they very much want to be part of the experience. My thanks to Kim Bobbin for inviting me and for the work she does with our littlest town people. Also, and I'm inviting everybody to do this next time they have it, I enjoyed painting at the high school for "Goodbye, Winter, Hello, Spring." No one will ever see my masterpiece. It will not be on display. But Andrea Haas and her students organized a unique evening of art, food, and drink. Keep an eye out for this event in the future. It was fabulous. We had our Career Advisory Board last night. Mark Danaher, Ken Lesser, Michael Emmett, myself, and wonderful people from the community are working for more awareness of career choices for our high school students. And last, the Weathersfield Education Foundation will be meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night, Wednesday night. Everyone is invited to attend. It's at the country club at 7:00. The Weathersfield Education Foundation has an event planned for Thursday, April 25th, at 6:30 at the Weathersfield Country Club. The event is sponsored also by Unico and the Weathersfield Foundation, with Gina Bereka speaking on Growing Up Italian, an event to enjoy and for a great cause. And there'll be more information to come on all that. So we were kind of busy in those weeks, huh? A little bit. And I know things are going on at the high school. Eden?
Yes, thank you.
Can you tell us what's going on?
Absolutely. Good evening. So first off, thank you for mentioning the Pieces Literary Magazine as the president of the group. That means a lot to have you mention it.
Congratulations. Well done.
As a senior, it's always scary to think, you know, what's going to happen with the group after I leave, especially after our past advisor left and retired. We feared for the group at first. We worried that students were going to come back with a new advisor. And luckily, we've had a lot of underclassmen actually join the group, a lot of talented freshmen. So I feel very confident leaving the group in their hands. And this was a very nice publication. I'm very excited about it, and I look forward to our publication in the spring. Also, at the high school, students, very lucky students, got to take the National Assessment of Education Process test today. I was so jealous I wasn't picked. All my friends got to go. I didn't. That's fine. And we're also honoring National Say Something Week, a Sandy Hook promise. WHS will be holding a Green Day on Friday, March 1st, in support of Say Something Week. And we invite the board to wear green on Friday.
Great, thank you, Eden. Any questions for Eden? The high school is always exciting to go into.
Always.
Really is. Okay. So if we're all done, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight and for watching. The board wishes you all a good night.